Of the Select Board of September 23 to order. The first thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. We have a quorum, and so the first thing I'll do is at 6:32, open the public hearing. This public hearing is to give interested members of the public an opportunity to comment on the amendments to the General Assistance Ordinance appendices A to D effective October 1st, 2019. Bill, would you like to take it from there?
Sure. So each year, DHHS in conjunction with the Main Municipal Association updates the maximum allowed amounts for general assistance as well as for basic needs, and these cover food, housing, utilities, heat, personal care, household supplies. And the General Assistance Ordinance is one of those ordinances in state law that the board acts on and implements without having a formal vote of the town. So it's one of those. So each year when we have different amounts that are determined by DHHS based on their economic studies to either, sometimes they decrease the amounts depending on what the economy's doing, but then the board after a hearing can then approve those different amounts.
Okay, so the first thing is taking any public comments on this topic. So is anyone from the public here intending to speak on this matter?
Do you have a copy of those changes? We have got the town office to pick it up and stuff. We haven't been able to talk about that.
In the materials, there's a copy of what the amounts are. We don't have the changes listed, though.
The changes were only in the amounts, correct?
Yes, only the amounts.
Not the verbiage. And that's an annual thing based on guidelines from the state.
Frankly, we don't have an option but to approve.
Which we don't have much control over. Yeah, if the board wanted to make changes to the amounts that are recommended by DHHS, then we would have to do market studies in all the different categories in order to come up with different numbers. Basically, they've already done that for us, and they do it in the different areas in the state, so they do look at the different regions. They don't simply just say blanket wide, it costs the same for a rental in Rockport versus Caribou, for instance. They obviously know that there are differences, so.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any public comment. Is there any comment that the board wants to make? This is not the time to make any motions, so. So, hearing none. I will declare the public hearing closed at 6:34.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report update.
Again, I'll briefly go through the written report that I have, just for those that are present and those that may be watching. Chief Peaslee and I had our first monthly meeting with the Operations Manager for Northeast Mobile Health Services to review the August EMS report run. I think it was a productive meeting, and they'll continue as we move through. The sidewalks at the town office have been completed. The construction there is done, so now we have staff that's watering grass and watering plants, too, on a regular basis. It certainly is a much improved product once those have been finished. The Walker Park seawall, this is one of the topics that the board had looked at previously. So I'd made contact with the current owner of the property that was adjacent to Walker Park and discovered that the property is under contract to be sold, was put into contact with the new potential buyer, and discovered that they are already working with Gartley and Dorsky on surveying because they want to shore up the seawall on their portion of the property.
Oh, okay.
So we, I signed a contract with Gartley and Dorsky as well for surveying and design work so that it can be done at the same time, and then that'll give us an estimated cost for the construction. We do have money in the budget for that.
I think eight thousand bucks or something.
Yes, and the contract is less than that. So that's moving forward. At the last Select Board meeting, a resident had asked about a 17-acre subdivision off Lime Rock Street. I did mention this to the code officer, and there are no subdivisions of that size that have been approved by the planning board or currently in discussion or construction. A landowner in that area had previously applied for a subdivision, but it was never built. So he's, the code officer will continue to monitor that to make sure that there aren't any issues or proper permits are put in place. We actually will be interviewing tomorrow and Wednesday for the administrative assistant position for code enforcement, planning, and assessing, so that'll be moving along quickly, hopefully, so we can get somebody in that position. As you know, the Opera House air conditioner for this space is not operational yet. It has been installed. We're having an issue with it talking to the computerized control system, so the Opera House manager has, the two parties involved will be here this week to hopefully solve that problem. And of course, it had to be a hot day today and over the weekend so that it's warm and muggy in here.
It could be worse. It's not that bad, yeah.
The Opera House, as you know, the fee schedule was approved to be changed by the board back in July. That has not been implemented yet because the contracts and fee schedule have not been updated yet by the Opera House manager. Vice Chair Kennedy Munger had been working on that, so I appreciate, she got me those edits, and so I have a draft that's been done that I need to review and hopefully get that, we'll get that in place so that we can get those fees being done, being implemented Tried to, trying to work a little bit more with the Opera House manager to give him some guidance and some support so that he can focus more on marketing the facility to increase some revenues here and to work on a plan to continue that, so. The paving projects for the season have been completed. Those were on South Street, Rockport Park Center, Mount Pleasant Road on the Hope End, Beach Hill, Church Street. We're also able to repave Rockville Road between Route 17 and Old Rockland Road, a short section, because we came in under tonnage on some of the other product, other roads. On Mount Pleasant, we did extend the pavement for about 800 feet to reach three more driveways on the gravel section toward, on the Hope End, so that now we have about, I think there's three or four in the very, in the middle, long middle section, that aren't covered now by pavement. So we were able to do that. It's also on the hill, so that'll help with getting rid of the ice and the snow in the wintertime because it is on the hill, so the pavement will help with that. And every, all of those owners were very thankful that now they have pavement at the end of their driveways versus gravel. You do have the FY '21 budget schedule in front of you, and so I would just recommend that you take a review of that and see the important dates for the Select Board when you meet, or when you meet with the Budget Committee. If you see any conflicts, either change your priorities or let me know, and we'll make The Main Municipal Convention is October 2nd and 3rd in Bangor. The town clerk's office will be closed on October 2nd, so the town clerk and the two staff with her can attend that day for trainings all day. And the finance director and payroll clerk and myself will also be attending the convention in Bangor.
I might interrupt. When I was first on the board, I had Diane, she registered me, and I went up for a day and sat in on a couple of the sessions, and it was actually quite fun, so, you know, I think if I'm not mistaken, if the Select Board's interested in attending, you certainly can, and there were, I don't remember, but a couple of the plenary sessions looked interesting, and if I had more time, I would've gone to them this year.
Yes, and certainly if any board member's interested in going, just let me know, and I can register you, or you can register yourself online through their website. It's on their homepage, and just click and register that way. We will be working to schedule some library construction informational meetings, just as a, maybe a quarterly update that just provide people the opportunity to hear what's happening with the construction, even though the library construction reports are on our website, and we get them weekly, and they are posted weekly. We felt that it might be a good idea just to share information and be able to answer some questions. We will be putting those off a little bit until end of October, we'll say. And one other item to add would be that the roadside cleanup is coming up the 26th and 27th of the month, so when you see bags of garbage on the sides of the road, as usual, you don't know what that is. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Would it be, because we don't have anything from the police department, and I assume that's why Randy's here, to give us an update of his activities.
He's here actually to, he's here for the fireworks complaint.
But we have no activities for, to report for the month?
I have them, that I'll be sending out to the board, yes.
But they're not?
They're not included in this.
Is that something we can?
You'll be getting them.
Get it, alright.
Yes, you'll be getting them on a regular basis, not just from the police, but from all the departments as well.
The other thing is the, Madam Chair, if the, if you found it beneficial, perhaps we could have the chief data mine the last year to see if there's anything that he can extract for complaints that might be attributed to rental properties, and if he can then determine whether they're long-term or short-term. I'm not saying he has to do it tomorrow, but it will help us determine whether we really have an issue or whether we're just trying to be ahead of the curve and prevent things from happening.
Yeah, sure, that's a good suggestion, yeah. And I guess I meant to say, and I know this is a little off-topic now, but I meant to say that if we, you know, if the board would agree, perhaps we should put something on the Facebook page where they're, you know, letting people know if, that they're free to comment on the issue of short-term rental to the board. It's just another way of communicating with us if they wish.
And one last PD thing, that, when are we going back to two cars? I believe we had directed when Ken was here to go back to two cars. I don't think that's changed.
I don't, I don't follow it, your comment.
But they're all?
Chief Gagnon, you want to come up here?
I guess that's what I was saying, is we had decided as a board that they should go back to two, and I'm wondering if we're still using three, or are we? What's that?
Police cars.
Right.
No, we didn't buy a new car last year, and we kept the old one to use as a secondary vehicle.
So it's not being used unless something else is broken down?
Right. Or if somebody's going to training or something like that. It's just, we have two primaries. We're not using three cars right now. Somebody goes to training for a couple of days, we send them in the oldest car. We use that and put a lot more mileage on it to keep the mileage down on the other cars, too, until July 1st of this year, and we put it into a secondary role. But no, we did not decide to get rid of the third car.
No, I think the board did if there was a check, but that would be mine.
Well, we had to do a check.
I don't believe so.
Well, I can take a look at it and follow up and see what was, was that during the budget process, or was that?
Yep, that was during.
Just to give me clarification.
Yes, so am I.
I'll have to research it.
I got my notes somewhere.
Okay, anything else on the, yeah, thank you. Anything else on the Town Manager's Report? All right, the next item on the agenda is public input on non-agenda items. So if you're here to speak about an item that's on the agenda, for example fireworks is on the agenda, then we'll wait until we get to that agenda item. If anybody has any public comments that they want to raise that are not on the agenda, then now's your time. Or hold your peace until two weeks from now. Okay, all right, moving on. Next thing on the agenda is the amendments to the agenda. Do we have, we have a very short agenda, so do we have any amendments? The only thing I'd say is that I have some changes to the minutes, so I'm going to ask that we take the minutes off the consent agenda to make those changes. Just a heads up. Any other amendments to the agenda? No? All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, as we just discussed. We can deal first with the, adopting the General Assistance Ordinance, which-
Yeah, that is the only thing on the consent agenda. We've taken the other things off.
That, the minutes, right, exactly.
But we just, we removed those, so.
Yeah, exactly.
We can approve the consent agenda.
You can make a motion to do so if you wish.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which only includes the general ordinance changes.
General assistance ordinance.
Second, I'm sorry, general assistance.
Yep, is there a second?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Five-zero. All right, thanks. Now, the next item is the meeting minutes for August 12th of 2019. And did anybody else have any changes before I do?
I have something on page four.
On page four, okay. Oh, same thing, okay. You want to go ahead and?
Yeah, so, under item E on page four, it states, the second sentence states, the town manager stated that Chair Hall, Vice Chair Kennedy Munger, and he met with Camden Town Manager and Select Board, and that should be the Chair and Vice Chair of the Camden Select Board. It wasn't the full Select Board, it was just two.
Okay, anything on page five? I have some items. I would not normally comment on this just because there's just a few typos, and just because we're on them, on the second sentence, there's an S that's hanging out there between "is" and "that" that should just be deleted. And I can give these to you, to Linda.
It's all right, I'm making, I'm making notes, so.
Okay, great. And down, one, two, three, four, fourth from the bottom, this is Budget Committee Vice Chair Shaw stated "that," this is "hat." Then there's a number in there with reference to the Lime Kins, a possibility of a, wasn't that a $100,000 grant?
I would think it's, is it 100 or 10?
I thought it was 100. Does anybody remember?
I think it's 100. Check.
Because right now, it basically said, I don't know what it's saying, it's-
I recall 100.
It's a thousand.
Because I saw it legacy rock. Okay, I'll stay out of that.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not an appropriate number, whatever it is, it's in there now, so.
I think it's 100.
Yeah, I think it is, too. So if you could just confirm that. And, okay, moving on to page six. There's a couple As and Bs and things that are missing in terms of grammatically, but I don't, I'm not going to go through that. Page six, two from the bottom, it says the chair stated that Midco Salway's postponed there, and I would just say their annual meeting, supposed to their meeting. And that's all I had. Anybody else?
Not on that set.
Not on that set, yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion for that set?
Move that we approve the minutes of August 12th with the amendments discussed.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Five-zero. All right. Moving on to the minutes of September 9th. Page one?
Yep, I have one change on page one near the bottom of section two, where Board Member Hamilton stated that the last concert was, I'd like to have that changed to "well attended" and "volume levels were not an issue." That was my intent in making that comment.
And "volume."
That the last concert was "well attended" and "volume levels were not an issue," and that's because we didn't receive complaints on that concert. I'm not there to judge whether the concert was good or bad, nor whether it was too loud or not too loud.
On the fourth paragraph under the Town Manager's Report, it says that the manager has received a complaint. I think that, and it, and it refers to the manager as a "she."
Yeah.
I think the reason for that is that because actually I, as the Chair, received the complaint, and that's why it says "she." So change the manager to Chair, please. And, and then three down from that, it says Chair Hall stated that the music should be loud enough for the people there, but not for the whole town. Actually, it was for the whole, for the, for the whole harbor. It wasn't, you know, I wasn't making a facetious comment, I was really serious that it doesn't have to be, you know, out there for the harbor. Okay, okay, page two. Okay, page three. One, two, three, four from the bottom, Resident Janet Hall of West Street, she said that the project should be financially responsible instead of financially responsible. Page four. Okay, so, this, bear with me, please. Chair Hall stated that the board approves the bylaws for the committees. They need to be, they need to be consistent, and that if the committee needs board approval of the bylaws initially, comma, then board approval must also be necessary for amendments, It really kind of takes away, makes it sound like I was being some kind of dictator or something, the way it was worded.
Is there a way to give her that?
Yeah, 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 I'm happy to give it to her. Pass it to her. Okay, anything on page five, six, seven? I think that on the second, the first large paragraph, Board Member Cole stated, Planning Board, et cetera, if you look at the end of that, that last sentence in that paragraph, "it will be reviewed by the Planning Board on October 3rd. They will discuss the long-term parking arrangement brought up by residents." I think that that should be amended to say, "they," meaning the Planning Board, "will discuss the long-term parking arrangement located at the corner of Route 1 and Pascal."
Well, the intent was the guy's advertising long-term parking, and so it's really a code violation, so I think Bill was going to look into it.
That's fine. I was just, my, that's another, that's actually another point, because it makes it sound as though, the way it's written, that the Planning Board will look at it.
Right, it's going to take care of that.
So, I think it was, I think you're right, Doug, that Bill Napier, or Bill Post will have staff look into the long-term parking arrangement, but the point is, long-term parking arrangement where? And we were talking about located at the corner of Route 1 and Pascal. I don't know what that property is.
Rockport Center, I think he calls it.
Rockport Center. It just wasn't identifying what we were talking about. So Bill Post will have staff look into the long-term parking arrangement located on the corner of Route 1 and Pascal Avenue, Rockport Center. That's it, that I had. Anything else on that page?
And when we say it is a well-run, excellent committee, is that referring to the planning board?
Yeah, I got one. Yes.
Yeah, that was, go ahead.
All right, just real quick, on adjournment, section 10, we need to have five, four, or how many here?
Oh, great.
Four, four, zero post.
Yeah, yeah, great, yes, that, yeah. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes of September 9th as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Mark, is your hand up?
I was not here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm staying.
Right, that's why it was four.
So, yeah, yeah, so, and so was the other one. Oh, no, 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 just this one, just this one.
Here's a question for you, though.
Four, so it's four, zero, one.
We've had this discussion before. With the advent of livestream, so that all of this is documented digitally and available, would it be better to change the format of our minutes to simply the motions that are made and the votes, rather than trying to include the narrative, which may, the minutes may differ significantly from the livestream?
Hopefully, they don't.
Oh, well, yeah.
But I, I-
Yeah, we spend a lot of time correcting what the intent was.
Yeah, but the last time, I think we hardly had any, I think we had one change to the minutes, and so I just think that there were, you know, this was a little unusual to have this many changes, but overall, I think the minutes are much better than they were, because it used to be she said, he said.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying that, in a pure sense, wouldn't it be better to let the livestream speak for itself, and then from a legal standpoint, just keep track of our motions and votes?
In a pure sense, it would, but the searchability of a livestream is near zero.
Yeah.
So you would have to watch hours of livestream, whereas with this, you can plug it in, search for a word, it pops up, you can go exactly and find out what's where.
Okay.
I agree with you, I think there's some value to having some discussion, but I do think that, you know, they're much better than the way they work, so kudos, Linda, and keep on doing a great job.
I mean, we're making not overly substantive changes to those, we're just-
That's right.
Being us.
All right, next item on the agenda, the only action item, is the approval of the Planning Board bylaws.
So the bylaws include the language that we're including where the Board, the Board or Committee can recommend amendments, and then the Select Board must approve those amendments. And these have been put into the format that we're using for all of the bylaws.
Yeah, so I think that the format, that's great, there were just a couple little typos here that could be easily just taken out when, when she finalizes these, and we, I mean, if the board wants to do so, I think we can certainly approve them today. You notice that there is like an underlying, in the first paragraph, there's an underline underneath the period. And in the second paragraph, in the second sentence, it says the board, the boards or something, it doesn't say the board. And on the third law, a third par, sorry, third page, geez, on paragraph E, one, two, three, third line down, there's an underline underneath workshops. I guess he's, this is probably just redlining from prior versions.
Yeah, that's, that's what those are.
And then the last, page five, under item five, before section seven, there's also, I think, a hyphen, an underline there before the word "public." So those, you know, just cleanup changes from the red line.
Yep.
And so since they're bylaws and they're going to be around and live on, I think we should just find those out. With the waivers and amendments, section eight, you know, is, as-
That's the language that we're going to use.
That's the language that we're using. Anybody else have any changes or discussion, or is there a motion?
I move the board approved the Planning Board bylaws as amended. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five-zero. Great, all right, discussion items. First item is fireworks complaint. Bill?
Yes, so Susan Sinclair's here, she'd emailed Deb a fireworks complaint back in August, and she and I had talked about it with the police chief. We talked about the fact that the town is under state law currently for fireworks, which basically just limits them until 10 o'clock, except on holidays like the Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, where it's midnight or 12:30 in the morning. And that if there was any, she should come to the board because the way to have the discussion about a potential ordinance to restrict fireworks or whatnot would be to have that discussion with the board to either start that process or not. And I've asked the chief to be here so that he could address the question about other complaints that may have, you know, been in town about fireworks, and I know Susan is here, so she can certainly speak for her on her complaint.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the, for, from a process standpoint for tonight, is our intent to listen, or are we going to get into elaborate discussions?
I think it's more to hear, to hear the complaint.
Okay, so input, perfect.
Susan, would you like to come up? And Chief Gagnon, around.
And just so that you're, you're aware, Susan, they have your email in their package, so they, they can see that, so that you know that they have that. So they, they can see that, so, so that you know, um, that they have that.
And I'm not going to address the specific night, the specific situation anymore. But, the current Rockport fireworks regulations allow explosions to be set off from nine o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock at night every single day of the year, with the exception that explosions are allowed until 12:30 in the morning on July 5th, whether it's a weekday or not, December 31st into January 1st, and the weekends before and after both July 4th and December 31st, which would mean until 12:30 in the morning on Saturday, 12:30 in the morning on Sunday. The explosions can be as close to your home as your neighbor's property line, which can be very close in Rockport. It doesn't matter if you have a sick child, or a family mem, a sick family member, a person or pet who is terrified of all the noise, or you simply have to get up early and go to work in the morning. Too bad. Rockport is becoming more and more densely populated. There are two homes, two brand-new homes just on my stretch of Main Street, and more lots are for sale, and they're not going to be farms, and they're not going to be camps. The current regulations are not sufficient protection for the families, the ill citizens, the pets, and those who just don't need the stress of having to put up with random explosions until 10 o'clock at night or 12:30 in the morning. Consumer, I would like to just suggest, consumer fireworks may be used between the hours of 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, with the exceptions on the following dates, July 4th, and the weekends immediately before and after July 4th, and before and after December 31st, may be used between the hours of 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM. On December 31st only, may be used between the hours of 9:00 AM and 12:30 AM the following day. I'm just asking for that hour of non-stress out of our, all of our lives. Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
Knowing I was coming here tonight, I looked back through the complaints from 2015 to 2019. And what I found, I did two different type searches. One of the searches was, both were through the Spelman Law Enforcement System that we used for recording all of our incidents. So I wanted to grab as much as I could as far as, when it comes to fireworks. So for 2019, searching the, uh, searching the complaint heading fireworks, we've had zero complaints. Using the narrative word fireworks, which would bring up any report that has the word fireworks in it, I found five of those, only one complaint was after 10:00 PM. When searching the narrative type for the word fireworks, what happens sometimes is these complaints come in as shots fired, and the officer will go and investigate, and they may find that it was actually fireworks. So when they put in the narrative fireworks, it brings it up. So it gives us a broader, uh, look. 2018, we had two fireworks complaints, and we had four with the word fireworks in the narrative, one complaint after 10:00 PM. 2017, uh, two complaints, and four in the narrative section for fireworks. No complaints after 10:00. 2016, we had five fireworks complaints, and I found an additional three with the word fireworks in it. No complaints after 10:00. And in 2015, we had, uh, four and two, and one complaint after 10:00. I didn't find any place where anybody had been injured in any of these firework complaints. A lot of them were in that time period of nine to 10:00, uh, when we were getting them. So they weren't technically in violation. Town of Rockport opted not to do an ordinance, so we fall back on the state laws as Ms. Sinclair has just advised you. Camden does have a fireworks ordinance. The town of Lincolnville has a fireworks ordinance. I live out in Searsmont, we don't. I didn't look, I'm, I'm assuming Rockland has one, I believe they do.
Of the, of the complaints after 10:00 that you have noted, what were the outcomes? Were there warnings, were there summonses?
Uh, in a number of these, it was unfounded complaints because somebody called in, said they heard fireworks. The officer goes, "At that time of night, we're not finding anybody." You know, to go in and detail every one of these, I didn't because there's limited time this afternoon. But, uh, that is basically what it is. Most of your shots fired end up being fireworks that the officers were finding.
You said that Camden has an ordinance?
They do.
And since you're the chief for Camden, can you tell me what that is?
I think I printed it off. Camden doesn't allow any, uh, without a permit. They don't allow any consumer use of fireworks.
So when you say without, so, so a consumer cannot get a permit?
If you have a permit to have a fireworks display, that's an authorized use. Let me look down through here quick. The town of Camden finds that the sale and use of consumer fireworks identified by the state law could pose a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare. The town further finds that in the best interest of the town and public to prohibit the sale and use of consumer fireworks in the town of Camden by adopting local ordinance provision as allowed by relevant state law.
So in other words, Camden enacted the state law that was prior to this latest provision allowing fireworks?
And you're not allowed to use consumer fireworks in Camden. I have that copy of that, if you'd like it.
Yeah, could we have that? Since you're the chief of Lincolnville.
And there is a map, if you go on the State Fire Marshal's website, that shows the towns that have ordinances and towns that don't. And it seems like we are regulated in the mid-coast area by several of the towns. But anything out further, I don't think Hope has one in out further. I don't think there's many ordinances.
I think there was something in Ms. Sinclair's, um, email that caused me to, letter that caused me to look at other states. And I was amazed that, at least according to, to government, the government's Consumer Product Safety Commission, that most states don't have regulations. You can see all that white there. Most states don't have regulations on consumer. But anyway, this was like 2014, I think, and, you know, things could have changed since then. But they only had, and they actually showed Maine is having some, um, you know, some regulations.
I wonder if it's not done by state, because I know in Colorado, they, they're not legal.
They're not legal, and yet, uh, and yet, that would, that's not indicated here. So, and it doesn't seem like this is very, uh, yeah, right, could be by city.
So by default, for not having order, an ordinance, you fall back to state regulations?
Right, right, which is where we get the, um, the, the guidelines, not guidelines, the requirements in terms of the time, the time of, that we're talking about, up to 10:00, and then up to 12:30 in the morning. All of that is in the state statute, which we fall back on because we don't have an ordinance producing, uh, requiring anything more restrictive.
It looks like Lincolnville sort of applies it in, with different areas in the town as to what regulation applies.
And it would be interesting to know what Rockland does, too. Maybe we should take a look at some of the other surrounding towns.
Well, I guess that's the question I would have for the board, then, is, um, you know, I'm glad the chief put together the stats for you so you could see the number of complaints that we've received. And again, that's, you know, as he stated, sometimes it might come in as a gunshot, but it's fireworks. But is that something that the board wants to, do you want to pursue a potential workshop on this? Do you want more information? In my, in my six weeks that I've been here, you know, this is the first complaint that I've received, obviously with fireworks. I live in a community that, um, had a fireworks ordinance and allowed them, uh, based on a permit. So the permit was issued to the, to the fire chief's office. So that then if there was a complaint that came into the police department and it was in that neighborhood, they know, well, that's a fire, that's fireworks versus a gunshot, for instance, or something like that. I've been in communities, I've managed communities where, um, they were banned.
And also, there are some communities where, as you say, when you have to get a permit, then at least, um, you can put that permit on the, the notification of that on the Facebook page. And you'll have it placed for fireworks permits that have been issued. So, I, I'm not expressing, you know, my opinion here. I'm just saying that it, that has the added benefit that if you do have, um, children, sick people, pets, whatever, you can plan for it, because you know what permits are being issued for what dates.
Being a good neighbor helps out, too.
Sorry.
If you're planning on having one of these, I guess we could throw out there that, if you know you're going to be putting, letting off fireworks, let your neighbors know. They might want to come watch the display. But it does take that anxiety of a mortar shell going off, uh, at 9:30, 10:00.
Fireworks, fireworks fall under, just like any other noise issue. We have noise ordinances, and we have the ability of the, uh, anybody that's bothered by noise to call the fire department, uh, the police department 24/7.
They can call the fire department if they want.
Call the fire department.
But if somebody calls you and, about fireworks, then what's your response?
If it's before 10:00, it's legal by state law.
Right, and so that, regardless of our noise ordinance, because our noise ordinance is not going to fireworks in particular. So I think that probably the Trump, the state law on fireworks trumps the noise ordinance, is my guess. But I'm not rendering a little opinion.
Yeah, because it's a legal activity because you don't have a town ordinance with specific parameters as to what you can do.
Right, so I don't think it's effective to, to say that you rely on the noise ordinance because, uh, because it's trumped on state, state statute, probably.
So I guess it goes back to my question, then, is whether the board wants more information or have a workshop on this, or?
I guess I'm, I'm a little bit reluctant to do, you know, make more meetings, hearings, writing an ordinance, unless I really sort of knew more about the, this instance that sort of caused this to come up. And, you know, you mentioned the good neighbor thing, um, you know. One thing I don't want the board to do is write an ordinance because there are two neighbors that don't get along, and that we get sucked into it.
My suggestion is if you're going to do something, let your neighbors know. They might want to come over. You know, that's nothing we can mandate.
That's, and I understand the broader issue. You know, it might be your opinion that these noises are, uh, it might be your opinion that the noises are offensive. And I understand that, that's completely fine for you. But again, I don't want to get the board dragged into a, a big thing here if this is just a problem that you have with a rude neighbor of yours.
Actually, the neighbor was fine. I called them up, it was the golf course. I haven't really heard anything over there, it was the golf course. I come from Connecticut. Fireworks have been banned for many years, and we all, we all lived just fine without them. I've got two grandsons, one is very anxious.
Yeah.
And I just don't like, we, my family, I live with my entire, my family, we don't like loud noises. It was out of the blue, it's out in the dark. What are they doing? Is it a gunshot? I don't know. I called the golf course. I am so sorry, I am so, I didn't know he was going to bring that. And if he does it again, I'm going to ban him from the golf course forever.
That's a great proposal.
Well, alrighty then, fine, have a nice day, and everything was fine.
See how that works.
I called the golf course again. I am so sorry, Mr. Peasy is here, and he said we have to let it go till 10:00. How can the fire chief interject between my family and the agent of the owner of the golf course? How can he do that? So this is what set me going. His response, I called him on his cell phone. Too bad, too bad, you get before, before the select board, too bad. I have kids that are scared, too bad, get before the select board. Here I am, guys, and I need your help. This is not just one, I don't care about the golf course. If the owner of the golf course decides that every night he's going to have an event, he's going to get a permit, and he's going to have an event that's going to involve fireworks until 10:00 every single night, I can't, I, I don't complain to the police. Because I know, I know a lot of people don't bother to complain to the police. They hate it, but they don't bother because it's legal. And now a lot next to us is for sale. It's a very small lot, it's only an acre and a half. What are they going to do to us? Are they going to do it every night till 10:00? They could, they could legally do it. And I don't want to live like that. I don't want to live like that.
So what I'm hearing you saying is, one of your biggest concerns was the way that you were responded to by a department head of the town. Is that?
That is what set it off.
Okay.
But in considering it, you know what? He's right, he's right, too bad, it's legal. You come before the select board and figure it out.
If, if that's an accurate portrayal, which I'm not doubting, I'm just saying it may have been able to be handled a little more smoothly.
When you're there at 9:30, and you've been told by the owner, by the agent of the owner of the golf course, that he's going to handle it, I'm so sorry, it's, he's going to handle it, it's, it's done. And then to have the chief of police, then to have the, the same person be told, "Tell me." What, Chief, Chief Peasy said we have to. No, I don't accept that, I'm not going to accept that.
That's, that's a different issue.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It's like, it's like, why?
But it's the fireworks, it's the. The fireworks issue is, is a legitimate, is a legitimate issue from a resident that has a, has a complaint about it. My question, again, is whether this is something that the board wants to get more information about, have a workshop like you did with short-term rentals, to, to let people know that they can come and hear their opinions about fireworks or not.
Yeah, and I wonder, because this was on the agenda, and I don't see anybody else here with any concerns about fireworks. And that's not to say there aren't other people, but in terms of where we have to put our priorities.
And let's face it, people don't set off fireworks that often in Rockport, they don't. Because most people live here, for one thing, and would, would not want, you know, if you own a lot, if you own a property, you don't necessarily want to piss off your neighbors. None of my neighbors do that, except for one golf course. So.
In the spirit of.
I think it's very lazy to just let it go. I really, I'll have to say this, I think it's lazy to tell this, "Let it go, let it lie." Well, we don't get any complaints, because people know that 10:00 is the cutoff. And they might be miserable, but they know it's, they're just, they don't want to be here yelling.
In the spirit of gathering more information, I would offer that perhaps, uh, our manager could get copies of the ordinances from, uh, Rockland, if one does exist, and distribute these other copies here from both Camden and Hope, and let us look at and noodle.
No, it's mine.
But I am, I am with Doug on the necessity, or not necessity, of additional workshops and, and those types of things.
No, we're trying to find the Rock, uh, the Camden Town ordinance. It's around here, but anyway, yeah, so, anyway, um, I think that, um, uh, I, I, I agree with Doug, we don't need a bunch, a bunch of workshops and all. But I do think, like Jeff said, that it would be useful to know how other towns around here treat this. I mean, if we're one of the few towns that actually allows it under the, under the state law, and most of our neighboring communities don't, then that kind of sets us apart pretty different. And I do, and it's not like we have to go along with everybody else, but I, I have some empathy for Susan's concerns about, um.
I think we all do.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I know it's disconcerting to some people. It's disconcerting to some pets who go crazy. At least if owners know that it's going to happen, then there might be something they can do about it. If, you know, a permit is required, at the very least. And if we wanted to go further, then we could go further. But I do think it would be helpful for us to have a better understanding of what, what neighboring communities have.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to learn what neighboring communities have. That takes very little of our time. You know, the real issue here, though, is there a critical mass of Rockport citizens who feel the same way that our, uh, guest does tonight? And that's the question. I mean, with all due respect, if it's one person, uh, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. On the other hand, if, you know, we get 20 or 30 citizens in this room saying that, you know, we need an ordinance, then I think we look at it.
I think it's another useful thing to put on the Facebook webpage. I mean, to solicit people to tell us what their views are on fireworks. I mean, I think that we should use the Facebook page as a means of communication, not just us telling them, but two-way communication. Whether or not they post it on the Facebook page, or, or we request that they send us a note, send an email to Diane, or, sorry, Diane.
A more formal survey would be more appropriate because the ability to misuse and misrepresent one. oneself on Facebook is quite extraordinary.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting that they, we could request that an email be sent or whatever, not necessarily to comment on the Facebook page, but I do think that we should solicit more information on it. I don't think it requires having meetings, but, you know, there could be people out there that, that don't pay that much attention to our agenda, believe it or not.
Yeah, and I guess we'll just maybe start with the information that Bill can find from the other towns to see if we're sort of an outlier in how we're treating these or...
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can certainly gather more information on the ordinances and we can go from there anyway.
And ultimately, we know what the people want when they vote yea or nay on an ordinance.
Well, that's true too.
I mean, you know, but if they don't have the opportunity to vote on it, then we sit here and don't know.
Do you have any interest in petitioning your friends' neighbors?
I'd be very happy to do that.
Because, I mean, I think, again, if you, yeah, I mean, I think, well, I think if you just on a piece of paper wrote something out and had, you know, X number of people sign it and came back, it may have a little more traction.
I would suggest you might do it in a non-inflammatory way, you know.
I'm trying.
Well, I, yeah, but I mean, you know, I'm just saying that people will be more inclined to consider something if they're not signing their name to something that sounds inflammatory. I'm not suggesting you are or not, I'm just giving you a little guidance, and then if you want to, yeah, put it, you know, get some, get some names together, that certainly means something to the board, and we will, at the same time, look at what neighboring towns do. Is that sufficient guidance, Bill?
Sure, yep.
Thanks for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing under discussion items is the Camden-Rockport Pathways Committee update. So Jeff Scott, could you ease them up?
Oh, there's Jeff.
He's hiding in there.
He's hiding back there, yeah.
We're doing a little dance back here. I don't know of an apple. Can't I, is there a mouth that I could hit?
There's a mouth back here.
Because then I can, I think, is somebody else on? Maybe I can hit the slideshow here.
Yeah, I think you have to go to slideshow, drop down and there's a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to try to do that. Oh, yeah, here we go. Do you see that better now, Jim?
I can see the slideshow.
There you are, a little lower. Now, can you see it? Play.
From the beginning.
Where? I can't see it.
Play over on the road.
What do you want, slideshow? From the beginning. I just hit it.
Let's start.
There you go, thanks.
This one?
Yeah, that one right there.
Hey, we're in business.
Deal.
All right, thanks. I got your attention. I don't know what's going on, so I, I was hoping to run this from my computer, but this is great. Thank you so much. Now we're organized. So let me start by thanking you and say that I'll cover this, some of its old stuff, some of its new stuff, and I hope it makes sense to you. Should be about fifteen minutes, maybe twenty. All right? First, I thought I'd start with an idea for the seven, Route seventeen to ninety intersection. Just a concept. What do you think?
That's humor, Jeff.
Oh, that's, okay, that's not acceptable? All right. But stuff like this does exist. That's in Holland. I was amazed. I was amazed when I saw that. It's a way to get, traffic keeps going and so do the pedestrians and bikes. Kind of cool. Not suggesting that at all. So, just to refresh your memory, the Pathways Committee was formed in two thousand. There was a charter that was created by this select board in conjunction with the Camden Select Board and set it all up. I think you've seen that. We have ten members, six alternative, all, alternates. We're pretty much full all the time, but we're always searching for alternates so that we have a, a good on-deck circle, so to speak. So our, our charter basically, it's, it's, it's a page long, but basically we manage specific projects related to enhancing bicycle and pedestrian transportation. We're really interested in connecting things, the bikes and pedestrians. So that's our mantra, how to connect it in a way other than by car. And we develop a master plan, which drives our daily discussions, or weekly or monthly discussions, and we work cooperatively with everybody, we hope. All right? So part of that is what this report's about, is to keep you apprised of what we're up to. So our process, we meet monthly. As I mentioned, we focus on creating connections, connecting destinations and the communities within Rockport specifically, because as you know, we have five communities. We update and maintain the master plan. We set priorities focused on safety, community health and walkability, and the amount of pedestrian traffic. So what you do is you kind of survey, and we've done this, we've surveyed where the highest pedestrian traffic is. We go out and look at the situation, and you'll see, and in our discussions with you and amongst ourselves, you can, you'll see that in those decisions. We're also an active group seeking grants. We're very interested in multiplying the town's money. We need to multiply the town's money as much as possible, and we're willing to, to lean into that and help with the grant writing. And we generate awareness through meetings like this, through an online presence. We have our own Facebook page and a website page, and we post sort of what's going on and those things, and we have followers, which is kind of cool. We try to, we try, we try to try to put out press releases once in a while, but we only have so much manpower, so we're not the best at that, and we know that. We could do better about keeping the public more aware and, and create that better awareness. So that's, that's a personal thing. I wish I had more energy to put into that or someone within the group did. And we try to partner to keep awareness. So partnerships are like with Coastal Mountains Land Trust, with Main Coast Heritage Trust, with Erickson Fields, with the high school, with the Y, the elementary school, any, we're, we talk to people because we're, we recognize that if the more people involved in a project, the more likely it is to succeed. And we also go out and maintain a sidewalk survey, which is also part of the foundation for how we follow our, make our decisions. It's like, so we got all these things to maintain, which ones are the priorities that we want to voice to the select board, and we really appreciate that you're, you listen, and we're not just arbitrarily listing these things off. So that's our process. Specific projects, just to refresh your memory, Maritime Farms is imminent, we hope, at least in terms of, we're going to go out shortly for another bid on the project. That's in conjunction with a couple of other bids in Camden, and we're hoping that a larger bid will make the whole, will make all three projects cost less. That's what we're hoping for, because they don't have to mobilize multiple times for each project, and that's a big part of the construction cycle. Oh, boy. Route ninety is a project that has been warming on the back burner, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I'll get into more details about it and show you. We also have the projects that we, we talked about a few weeks ago, the bond-related projects, and we'll talk more about that. Sidewalk survey maintenance, we're going to update the sidewalk survey shortly. It's on our, on the front burner, and we have a few other things that I'll update you on. So this is a little hard to see, it's the best I can do. There's a little key down there in the lower left, I think each of you have it in front of you in your packets also, so it might be a little easier to see. It's a map of almost the entire town, which makes it very small, and the scale is very, very large, very small, one or the other. You can see that there's existing sidewalks marked, there's projects that we'd like to work on, there's medium priority projects, low priority projects, and long-term projects. And I like this map because it gives me a big picture of what's going on in the town and where the existing infrastructure is and where there isn't any. So I'm going to use this map to sort of go through and reinforce the projects we're going, working on, and then expand a little bit on them. So there's the Maritime Farms project up in that, it's just, you know, it's, it's right up there with Camden. There's a piece of it, and, and it sort of goes off this map a bit, but that's where it is. I think you, you know that pretty well. And just a little more detail on that, there's the, in the middle of the, right where, basically where the two towns meet, there should be a crossing to Hanaford, it'd be a pedestrian-controlled crossing. The sidewalk will be on the Maritime Farms side, which is the bus station, which will be great because people will be able to walk out of the bus station onto a sidewalk instead of onto the street, which is the current situation when they pull their suitcases. So they can walk south into Rockport to the, to the, to the country inn, which a lot of people stay at right-of-way, where they can walk north to Camden, to the accommodations there too. There is, they are going to change the way Camden Street, part of the process is, the bid is to change the way Camden Street meets Route one. They're gonna make it turn a little bit to ninety-degree out up a little bit and close down the length that pedestrians will cross at that crosswalk, which will be a new crosswalk. Are you with me? It's right up on Camden Street, or Camden Street, it's just up at the top right-hand corner there. That's probably the biggest physical change you'd notice, not related to actually having a new sidewalk. And of course, the signal will have a new pedestrian, ped control related to it.
Is there an existing sidewalk on the other side of the Quarry Hill entrance? I can't quite figure it.
There is. It's, it's, again, this is a very five-thousand-foot drawing, but there are, there are engineering, there are engineering drawings. The, the sidewalk gets narrower and narrower as the grass has grown across it, but it almost comes all the way up to the stop sign on Camden Street, almost. It's about ten, fifteen feet short of it, but there is one there and...
On the north side of Quarry Hill.
Yeah.
Going up into Camden.
There is a sidewalk all the way into Camden, yeah. And that, yeah, I can, I can wax eloquent on that for a long time too. There are issues with that sidewalk that we are working with Camden on.
But technically speaking, there will be a sidewalk all the way from Maritime Farms or the bus station into Camden, technically speaking.
That's right.
Yeah.
And the long-range goal, which I, I won't specifically, I'll just allude to it here because it works well in the conversation, is that when we can get another grant, we will be extending this all the way down to Route nine, to Route ninety intersection. That would be the next piece of it. So there'd be a connection there. Route ninety, did I say it right? Yeah, I think that's it. Any other questions on that? So Route ninety, I talked about, it's this section that we're talking about between seventeen and one, and the, the vision is to have a multi-use path, which is a loaded word. It means both bicyclists and pedestrians can use it at the same time, which carries all kinds of baggage with it in terms of the DOT. It means there's a certain width, it has to have certain grades, and all this other kind of stuff. So I'm being very specific about using that language. It will be, there will be some kind of an esplanade, so it's not, it's not a sidewalk with a curb, it would be a way. Route ninety has a very large right-of-way, so there's lots of room for it to, to not be a budding. And the other issue is that Route ninety has a high speed limit, or higher, forty-five, and walking along a forty-five mile an hour speed limit road right up against it is very scary, or riding a bike. And so the idea is to move it away, especially because of the three primary destinations that we're trying to hook along here, you could consider little gems that we're trying to hook together. The elementary school is first, and that would be a way for the kids in the village to ride off-street all the way to the elementary school, which they can't. And the next one would be the high school, and, and kids ride or walk to the high school, but they walk on the road. And then the next one would be the, oh, there's the fourth one, I forgot, I'm sorry. Then there's the fields, the ball fields, and then the next one is MRC. So those are huge destinations where kids go to, and then, of course, the, the businesses along it as well. A challenge for this project is to figure out how to connect to Erickson, because right now, the, the kids have to take either from the elementary school or from the high school, they'll take a bus to get to Erickson, because there is no safe way to cross the road, and we would like to create some alternative for that. I don't know what that is. I don't, we're trying to work with DOT. Ideas we have are reclassifying the arterial highway, which I think is what Route ninety's called. Anybody help me with that? I think it's classified as an arterial highway, which means you, they don't like putting a crosswalk on it, but if we can get it reclassified for like the area in front of the high school or the area in front of the elementary school, we could put a crosswalk there. That would be really cool, because then they could cross in a controlled crosswalk, and then we just have to sit up, figure out how to build a sidewalk on that side. So, but right now, there's either do that or a tunnel or a bridge, but those are all monster projects. So we're working on it, and we are collaborating with the high school on that, and as part of that, the high school is asking whether they could have a, a high school student sit on our committee to voice, and I, I don't think that's an issue for the select board to bring before you, is it? Just to have them participate? Because it's an open meeting, so...
I, I personally think it's great. I love to have students participating and, you know, the, all the project-based learning that the high school and everything does. I think it's great to have student participation in anything we can do.
And this, the particular student is, has a vested interest because she lives on the other side of Route ninety, of Route ninety, so she has to cross every day to the high school. She walks across, so. And there's a, there's a small group of, of teenagers that does that every day, back and forth. So that's Route ninety, and it, and it, and as I said, it goes all the way to West Rockport, which is part of our master plan, is to connect these communities in our town and create those connections. It's a great project. I'd love to see that happen in the next ten, fifteen years, some twenty years. And we are, it's one of those, it's such a big project that it's one of those flywheel ones. It goes very, very slowly for a long time and slowly gains momentum, and that's what we're trying to do. We're collaborating with MCHT, which is the, they own Erickson, right? And so Main Coast Heritage Trust does that, and they are very interested in creating some connection to the schools. So they're a good partner, the high school's a good partner, and we're working with Coastal Mountains Land Trust because they're interested in connections to the Round the Mountain Trail and, yeah, so that's what we're doing on that. It's a big project, but I want to make sure you're aware of it, and something you're considering and thinking about when things come up. So bond-related. I, I sent this to Mike, and I'm sort of letting you know about what I sent to Mike. After the meeting, Mike and I drove around, he asked us to prioritize the committee on the projects. There were six projects, if you remember, that went into that bond, and this is our priority list right here. So there's Rockville, West, West Street, the Village Steps, Russell Avenue Lower, Russell Avenue Upper, and Main Street. So those are in a priority order. And to remind you where they are, I went back out and talked to the Rockville community. They actually had a meeting, and a lot of them were there, and they, they, I explained to them what we were proposing. Remember, we were talking about two hundred feet around the community center there? They said if they had, if they had a certain amount of money, they wouldn't put it towards the sidewalk around the community center, they'd put it towards the corner where, is that called Old Rockland? Old? What is that called? Old, what is that called? That road there that runs parallel to, uh, Seventeen. They put it on where it meets Gurnee. That, the, the, what happens is, is that, that people come to the community center, they walk down Gurnee Street. This is, I'm just channeling what they said. They come down Gurnee Street, and the cars who are coming out of Rockland and going up that old rock highway, um, they, they go really fast. They're continuing really fast up that road, and they make a left, and they go really fast. They cut the corner, and the ones coming down Gurnee Street are swinging really fast, and the ones coming down on, coming the other way south on Route Seventeen, cut the corner really fast, too. They would like to see the sidewalk that ends right at Gurnee go around the corner, on the inside of the corner, inside of the corner on Gurnee Street, and up to the first driveway, which I think is a very reasonable, it's not very far, there's space there, there's a dirt shoulder, the culvert's not an issue that goes underneath the road there. It's, there's lots of, lots of room. So that's what I sent to Mike, um, and he's looking at it and considering it.
Jeff, a question for you. The map that you showed, well, it's that map only in-
It's the same, yeah.
-color, but you've got the orange and the green lines. Uh, does that area, is that the area that you're talking about?
Right, the green line is existing.
Left side of-
The orange line is the new one, would be the new piece.
Okay, but it's the north side of Gurnee Street and-
And it meets that other road, I don't know.
Yeah, whatever, the, the straight road is basically the shortcut.
Yeah, the shortcut, that's right. So it's that little tiny piece, it's, it's actually maybe a hundred feet.
Yeah.
So it's very reasonable. Um, and it was, I loved the, the input. It was like, these are the people who live there, so.
Yes, I don't know whether this is something Bill's aware of, but we've been, Bill has been trying to channel everything through him to the department heads rather than committee people.
Did I see you on that?
You did.
Okay, no, I just, I didn't know whether you knew that, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, I did it, Mark.
Just trying to get everybody on the same page.
All right, thanks. Um, so that's the first one. The second one, um, which I think you know is in, on West Street, right?
Jeff, real quick, that's called Old Rockland Street.
Thank you, Old, I knew it was Old Something, Old Rockland, yes, thank you. The next one is, is West Street, which is the RES project, the redoing that, uh, that would be our second priority, uh, along, that would be along the old RES side of the street, improving that, fixing a lot of the issues there. The third project is, are the Village Steps, which have some issues in terms of safety, which we thought was really important. That's why it boosted up, because of the safety issue. Um, the fourth project, we thought was, the, the lower part of Russell Avenue has a greater issue because of sightlines and things like that. Um, it's very specific, Mike and I went out there and looked at it. Uh, I was gonna show you a, a little thing, but I can't. Um, I can, no, I won't try. But, um, where, uh, is that called Main Street? Where Main Street meets Russell? Is that the first street?
The Cent- Central Street.
No.
Central Street.
Well, there's Mechanic Street.
Mechanic, thank you, Mechanic.
Oh, Mechanic, okay.
It's, the first street is Mechanic Street. Right now-
Yeah.
-the new concrete, the new, the nice, super-nice concrete sidewalk ends at Mechanic. It makes the corner and it ends there.
Right.
And then there's a crosswalk-
Yeah.
-that crosses Mechanic.
To nowhere.
To nowhere. Well, it goes to asphalt, which is sort of like a wide part of the road. Mike and I looked at it, and we thought that a sa- the safest place to cross to the inside of the corner, rather than the top, would be to cross right there on where the concrete sidewalk ends at the corner of Mechanic Street, coming from town, cross, uh, cross Russell to basically this parking area by the driveway.
Linda Lesher's house.
Yeah, Linda Lesher's house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it. And, um, and cross there, which has the longest sightlines to the blind corner, um, and work up that side, and Mike talked about widening by about a foot, the inside corner sidewalk that exists in there.
Right.
And then that would be all the way up, all the way up to your house, Doug's house, and, and it would be connecting to that new sidewalk, and don't know, it's up to Mike whether that would be concrete or just redoing asphalt or whatever, but that's-
It's up to us.
That's a budget. Yeah, it's a budget, it's a budget.
It's true, it's up to us.
It's a budget issue, yeah, yeah. It's a budget issue, sorry.
Right.
And then the next one is the upper, um, part of Russell, which is the issue closer to Doug's house, which is the, uh, the erosion that crosses in this very narrow part of the sidewalk up there. Same issue, uh, um, and we, we put that as number five, which is up at that end. And then the last project is the, is Main Street, which is the one that connects to the town office, uh, from Summer Street. Summer Street has a beautiful sidewalk, and then it just ends, and then there's a painted line on the road on the other side of the street, uh, for you to walk on. So, yeah, and there's a neat little pattern there. You can see, a lot of the projects are, um, focused in the village area, and we're conscious of that. Hang on. Uh, and bec- and, and not shown on this map, so it's a little deceptive, is that we had talked about the maintenance needed down in Warrington, which is in the lower section, and we're gonna work on that. Mike and I went down and looked at those issues down there, driven by the sidewalk survey. Warrington has some sunken gratings and some drainage things, um, that he's gonna fix up. And so Warrington will get some attention, but that'll come out of the annual budget, hopefully next year. And then, uh, West Rockport, similarly, would also have some work done on. So I, as a committee, we feel better about, um, about the looks of where this work is, is being done. I'm sorry, Devin.
So I, I just have a couple of questions, um, about the, what you're thinking, the group's thinking was on the West Street RES and Build Steps, um, why those were rated, I guess, two and three? Because I, I can tell you, living at four, that is a very, very dangerous area going around that curve, which seems to me to supersede Wa- West Street and Village Steps in terms of priority. So I was curious about the thinking. I mean, people could get killed on that curve. I mean, it's very dangerous.
Yeah.
And, and cur- and cars fly around that curve.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the same input from the Rockville folks. They fly around that corner on the inside and they, it's-
On Rockville, which is number one, right.
But you're, you're asking about Western Village, why they rank, they, the concern at Village was, uh, the West Street, the West Street, uh, let me start with the West Street one. The West Street project, uh, was rated high because of the opportunity for a lot of, there's a lot of, lot of pedestrian traffic on that route, um, and, uh, uh, it's an opportunity to secure another piece of that, you know, Route Ninety vision, because that's a feeder on that. And so I think that-
It's kind of a long-term thing versus, versus serious bodily injury in other areas.
So there, it, it, it's tough, it's tough. It wasn't unanimous.
Not tough to me.
It wasn't unanimous.
[laughing]
But I'm just telling you, that's, that's where it comes from.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the ranking, I just may not agree with it, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, uh, as I'm saying, even within the group, uh, there was, this took like an hour.
Yeah, Mr. Ray.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, another project that we have, it's, uh, this is just something I want to be, just introduce to you, just create an awareness of, with you, is there's this concept called complete streets, all right? Um, complete streets are a way to approach all projects by looking, not just at car issues, but by looking at pedestrian issues. And these are some of the concepts that be, can be incorporated in, within it. It's something that Camden has asked us to look at and run some tests, uh, putting, putting, painting some charros on the road, which is that lower-right image, uh, putting up some signs to say, hey, share the road, or this is a bike route, or something like that. Just to, to create a greater awareness with motorists and, and experiment at what works. Camden is very sensitive to signage anywhere, and we're wondering whether that same objection would exist for creating this kind of awareness. So we're gonna run some tests, and I wanted you to, to know about that, or we wanted you to know about that. Um, the sidewalk survey, quickly, we look at about five, six different characteristics when we do the sidewalk. Every single section, look at the condition, obstacles, storm drains, curb repairs, handicap accessibility, sightlines, vegetation, obstacles, like, when you get to the corner, can you see to cross? Um, does a hedge need to be cut back? Is this a bad thing? You know, what do we do? And then also, from the point of view of cyclists, you know, are there gratings on the road? Are the storm, are the storm drains got good metal covers that aren't too wide for bicycle tires? Are they sunk in really far?
Pascal Avenue.
Hmm?
Pascal Avenue a few years ago.
Yeah, exactly.
Unbelievable.
On the, it was unbelievable how deep those were.
Foot drop.
Yeah, exactly. So that's what we look at, too. And the survey is long, it takes a long time to do, and update. Here's another concept, um, talking to Mike about-
Can I just, I have a question on the sidewalk obstructions, you know, when you let the, when the vegetation starts taking over the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I'm new enough to Rockport to not know, is that the homeowner's responsibility to keep that trimmed back?
It's the, it's the homeowner's responsibility, and, and the diplomacy that, uh, occurs at each of those situations is taken homeowner by homeowner. So, and, and, and how to approach it, whether it should be Public Works, um, what, you know, who it should be. Typically, in our, in the his, in our history, the, the pathways committee has not at, been asked to lead the charge.
No, I wouldn't expect, I was just-
We just point out the issue, and then we just, the town decides what-
Okay, so the survey.
Yeah, and decides what the action would be. Yeah, and, and the, the front person on that would be Mike.
We have in the past, and I'll give you an example, is with, um, Bill Chapman on the corner of his place. His rosebushes were in such a manner that they were obstructing a view, and they were within the road right-of-way, so we gave the option of them doing some trimming, having it done a little more creatively than somebody going in and just making it to our liking.
Mm-huh, mm-huh.
So, that's usually, it's been, that's how my experience has been.
Yeah, the Pascal sidewalk is very difficult to go along anymore, I just wasn't sure.
Actually, some work had been done there recently, I think.
Is that right?
Some, but there, more could have been done. Yeah, yeah, I agree. Pascal Avenue.
Yeah, if you see something, let us know. Yeah, that'd be great. So, when I first saw this, oh, when I first saw that image, I don't know if I can go back, I can't go back, I don't know how to go. Um, uh, I thought it was not real, but then I saw this picture.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Back arrow key, see that one?
I tried it. It just pulls up a sub-menu. Um, I, it's such a, such a weird optical illusion. This is in Norway, I think.
Norway, yeah.
Yeah. Isn't that cool? I still have wrapped my brain around, it's like, wait, those guys are standing in the air. What are they doing? Such a great job. So it's real. So, summary, um, these are the elements that we talked about with you tonight. The main master plan, awareness of bicycle pedestrian issues when you're considering projects, any project in town, that we're very aware of, uh, and we try to keep our ear to the ground on those projects, like, uh, the sewer project, like, anything going on on Route One going southbound, we're very interested in, um, taking into, into consideration pedestrian bicycle elements. Sidewalk survey, we work on, the maintenance, Maritime Farms project coming up, bond-related, we talked about, Route Ninety, and then, uh, Route One in Warrington, we covered as well. That's all I have.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks, Jeff.
It's very informative, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so the next on the agenda is, um, just the listing of, uh, the future meetings, office closures, and so, which we will not go through, and they're publicly available. Um, after that is select board liaison reports. Are there any reports?
I'll start. Uh, Planning Board meets this coming Wednesday, Library Committee meets Thursday, uh, Finance Committee is in the process of scheduling its annual meeting with the Bar Harbor Banking and Trust Company, who handles our endowments, sometime in October. Parks and Beautification Committee has been active in Goodrich Park and, uh, starting to look at Veterans Park and, uh, whatnot. I have asked if on the next agenda, Honani can come and sort of give a real update, similar to what Jeff just did, um, just to make sure the Parks Committee and the Select Board are on the same wavelengths and, um, you know, moving ahead together on stuff. I think, I think it'll be informative.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
And one thing to think about, one thing that'll come up, for instance, uh, our landscaping person has recommended removing some of the, the shrubs in Mary Lake Park, they're getting overcrowded. Now, you know, does the Parks Committee have to come to the Select Board to ask about removing a rhododendron or something? So, these are the kind of questions we want to make sure we have your backing on, uh, as we move ahead. And that is it.
We did meet up at Memorial Park, if you want to go with, finish up with that, Doug, about the trees.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, that's a good point. Erickson Preserve, uh, has a couple of sugar maple trees. Richard, uh, Lerman, who's on our committee, he's actually on a leave of absence, but he's on it now, thought sugar maples would be nice along Union Street there. Uh, the conceptual plan that was, um, sh- uh, drawn up and the one that we're sort of operating off of by Keith Smith, showed a couple of trees along the Union Street, and so the committee voted to accept, uh, or asked the Select Board to accept, um, these two sugar maple trees and, uh, have them planted now in the park, making allowances for where the new sidewalk and everything will be, so, uh, seemed to make sense. Oh, yeah, how are we gonna do that? See, that's another thing, I mean, does the, you know, does the Select Board need to approve planting those two sugar maples?
My opinion would be yes.
Okay? Well, then we better put it on the agenda and do it, but it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be terrible, you know? I mean, I planted the grass seed up in Goodrich Park, you know? I'm sorry, you know, I should have come to this group to, to ask.
Well, you know-
You know, we have to be a little reasonable, don't we?
Well, I mean, I, isn't the concept that we're supposed to approve some overall landscaping design at some point? And so, to the extent that we have-
Correct.
I mean, the problem is, is that we have, not problem, it's a good thing, I guess, that we have donations coming or something earlier than when perhaps that entire design is ready for approval?
Well, this is, this is why we're gonna present-
Yeah.
-next month. We'll bring the concept design, and we're hoping the Select Board will say, okay, let's run with that.
So it's really, needs to go on the agenda as an approval item, not just as a, as a, for your information discussion.
You're right, yes. It should be discussion and approval.
It sounds like it should be an act- an action-
Yep.
-item.
Yep.
Um, and then we can discuss the, the, I mean, we can, the maples then, the sugar maples will be a part of that discussion on that plan, right?
That would be good.
I mean, I, for one, twenty percent of the board, don't think that you all need to bring every little question like that to the board, but I think that, for the most part, it's gonna be taken care of by approving an overall plan, is it not?
I'm, I'm with you. If we have a donation, like any other donation, we should re- review and approve and accept the donation. But as far as a master plan, once we get the master plan and we see what it is, the Select Board says, go execute, we don't need to be involved in every blade of grass and shrub that's put into the dirt.
And we've already seen that there's gonna be some controversy about whether or not to plant something where future parking might go. We saw that from an email that we received this week. So I think that is not, that we should be prepared that that discussion will be taking place at that meeting.
Right, I mean, and again, what I really want is just a very transparent relationship between the Parks Committee and the Select Board, so that something doesn't happen down the road and, you know, everybody says, you know, what were you thinking about?
Yeah, right.
So is there an issue with the trees neat? Can they wait two weeks to be planted and still get established?
Yeah, the planting season ends in about another, probably six weeks for something like that. They'll have to be kept watered, but, uh, I, I think that'll be okay.
So we'll definitely have this on the next agenda, right? Okay.
I mean, you, you, yeah, it would be-
And maybe we can set some-
It would be ideal to do it sooner, um, and I think we'd sort of-
Well, that's two weeks away, though.
Yeah, okay, two weeks is fine.
If we have six weeks.
Yes, yeah, yeah, two weeks is fine.
And I guess the other concern I have is we, I mean, I've heard that a lot of the local nurseries are excited about donating things, and at what point do we approve a donation of mums for the post office versus, I mean, I get that sugar maples and trees are sort of structural and important, but maybe we'll just get to see.
Well, that's, yeah, you know, this, these are great points, because again, Plants Unlimited has donated $300 worth of plantings that are already planted up at, uh, Goodridge Park. And you're, you know, you're right, maybe those should have come here first.
I would say let's just thank them. Thanks, folks, for their donation. We don't need to approve that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine that we need to-
Leave that to the town managers to discretion.
Yeah, and where I am.
Yeah, plantings, I mean, you're just talking annual plantings, right? We don't need to look at-
Well, these are perennials.
Well, perennials, okay, sorry. Whatever. I mean, we're not talking about thousand-dollar trees, right?
We don't necessarily need to, but somebody needs to know that somebody's planting something somewhere. So whoever it is, direct them to Bill, and then we're covered. If he wants to give it to us, he'll bring it back to us.
That's right.
Yeah, we're good.
I can guarantee you, anything with Memorial Park will come to the board.
He's not touching that one.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah, probably.
All right, so Denise?
Uh, ZBA had the hearing on September 11th. Uh, the, the testimony and the, the hearing took, um, a good four and a half hours, so the ZBA was not able to reach a decision at that hearing because time had just got beyond them, because it was more complicated than just saying up or down, there had to be findings of fact developed. So the ZBA's, uh, uh, hearing has been, uh, will again be on October 17th, and that's the point at which the ZBA will make a decision on the, uh, library permit appeal.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
October 17th.
Seventeenth, okay.
Uh, Opera House Committee meeting, we learned about the, uh, air conditioning and, you know, Bill's, Bill sort of has covered a lot of the Opera House stuff that came up at that meeting, uh, in his, uh, town manager report, so, uh, we came up with a new fee schedule, or the Opera House Committee presented it to the select board, we approved it, but it wasn't being implemented because we didn't have, you know, a sort of, I guess it's in most cases, there's more steps to get these things done than, than you think. And so I offered to help Drew Weber, who's the Opera House manager, to just go through the contract so that we could try to move that on to the next step. So that's in good hands now.
Thank you for doing that.
Um, and again, I think the focus, and we talked about it at the Opera House Committee meeting, is to try to, I mean, Drew was hired partly because of the experience and what he could bring to bear in the marketing of the Opera House. So we're trying to free him up from some of the other stuff he's doing to really focus on that and, um, get some good programming coming in, uh, to the Opera House. Legacy Rockport, uh, focus on the main bicentennial, which will be in March of next year, I mean, that's the exact date. Some communities will be going on all year. Uh, we'll probably be doing something in the Opera House, have a big program, uh, maybe there'll be other events going on in addition, uh, but Legacy Rockport will take care of that. Um, lime kilns, looking for some grant money. We had a gentleman from the Stonemasons Guild come talk to us about what it would take to fix up the lime kilns and it looked like-
Oh, really?
-there were some, yeah, and I think there's some less, um, there's steps we can take to sort of stabilize them without-
Rebuilding.
-rebuilding everything. Um, so more to come on that. He's, um, gonna get back some information and we'll have, uh, some looking into grants again. Bill Chapman, Drew Helen Shaw has a lead. Um, Rockville Chapel came in, reported, they've done a beautiful job on some interior renovation, and now they're looking for some money to paint the exterior. And, um, I guess that's it. Oh, and the locomotive in the Harbor Park is also getting worked on.
Getting a new engine?
Yeah, right.
All right.
Everyone's dream.
And I think Rockport Marine is doing the woodwork.
Yeah, Taylor's, Taylor Allen is donating a lot of effort for the town in fixing that up.
That's great.
Pathways Committee, you heard Bill, most recent, uh, review of the priorities and their input on, uh, priorities to the monies that we had identified as potential bond monies there. Uh, they have another meeting next week. Harbor Committee has another meeting next week. The Rec Committee has a meeting currently in the calendar, but I need to validate, verify whether that's happening on that time and date or not. The last one did not. And, uh, Capital Improvements Committee has not met. That's it.
Mark?
Conservation meeting was tonight at 5:00 and here I am. Um, and Doug touched on the Parks and Beautification.
Okay, um, Midco Solid Waste meets this Wednesday, and, um, we, uh, are having several committee meetings, finance, governance. Um, Finance Committee did meet with Camden National Wealth Management, uh, last week about our investments and, um, just in a very short period of time, our money that we have invested that used to sit in a bank account is now working for us. That's about 1.6 million, I think it is, between the towns, um, uh, that's invested. And I think it's, I think it was like $16,000 it's made in the last few months, uh, so it's better than what it was doing sitting in a savings account.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, so that's good. Um, there has always been this issue of, um, the return, what, perk funds, and, um, Camden National suggested that one thing we might want to do is to take those funds that we hold and possibly put those on a sub-account. So anyway, there's gonna be more discussion about that. I think Bill and Megan are gonna sit down and chat about it. And, uh, we'll have more discussion about that, no doubt, at the meeting on Wednesday. You might recall that the issue there is that, um, Rockport and Camden had previously showed some willingness to take those funds, which are for closing of the landfill, and turn them over to Midco Solid Waste, if all four towns did that, but there were some towns that were kind of holdouts on it. And so the suggestion is now that we could, if we wanted, to take those funds and put them in a sub-account, so they would be identified and invested, um, and, but still, you know, identified as our funds.[1750.83]